Six o'clock, call the meeting order.
Vogel?
Here.
Sarchat?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Residing in the agenda is approve of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. Take motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please.
Vogel?
Yep.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. Time and place for any comments out of those that are in a public hearing. Any one of the audience wish to address counsel this time? Hearing none or seeing none, moving on to item five, consent agenda. Take a motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call please.
Vogel?
Yep.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries, next item.
Just wanna quickly, uh, drag the highlight number nine with, uh, Nate Mason. Getting upgraded pay wise on here, that's what it's for, but it also represents a lot of hard work that he put to become a paramedic. And, um, Dan and I talked about it actually just yesterday, I think it's really one of the neat things that that group does, which is help people, uh, find that career path that maybe wouldn't otherwise. There are unique things here about our department and so, good job for him for, it's a long, did twelve months, nine months?
No, it's, it's twelve.
Twelve.
He went through the Des Moines Fire Captain.
Yep. So, good job on him.
I had no cost to see. You're a paramedic.
Even better. Even better.
Everybody's kind of hard on you. We may all see that softball. We may have to pay for one, throw that up.
No, I saw the, I saw the line drive baseball, that wasn't a softball game.
That's got, no, it was a city end of the week.
Well, no, but he, no, yeah, okay, you're out. Uh, new business action item one, uh, it's time and place to close the regular meeting and open a public hearing on the authorization loan agreement, issuance of notes to evidence to the obligation of the city they're un- under not to exceed two point five million dollars. I'll ask the clerk when the notice is published.
February twenty-third.
Have you had any written comments for or against?
No.
Perfect, I would ask staff to make a report.
Thank you, Mayor. The, um, loan agreement and proceedings in the two resolutions, set forth the borrowing for two and a half million dollars for a water upgrade with Des Moines Water Works. Uh, this will ensure that, um, we have water flow and at the pressure that is necessary in the future. This also, this set of resolutions also sets up the ability to start levying for this transaction in the eighteen nineteen budget.
Anyone who wishes to be heard for or against the general allegation capital loan? Anybody on council have anything to add? Need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yeah, I didn't see you.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Sarchat?
It's you. Man, how'd I miss you? Sorry.
Don't worry, he doesn't have a vote.
Mike, did you have anything to add to the public hearing?
No, sir, I'm not.
You can do the option now. Sorry.
So it's closed?
Yeah, now it's closed, you have no chances. Item B, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-five instituting proceedings to take additional action.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yep.
Motion carries. Item C, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-six, authorizing the issuance and levying tax for the payment thereof, two point four seven zero million. Take motion.
Motion to approve resolution twenty eighteen twenty-six.
Second.
Take one.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Man, out of control, motion carries. Now you're good. Um, I, I guess on this note, uh, this was a long time coming, lots of work on staff, lots of council time discussing this. Um, I know that this is a big step towards our future and, uh, again, I think this has kind of been a discussion topic for the last couple of years, so not taken lightly by any means is the amount of, uh, work, the effort that was done here to get this done, so good work by all. Thanks for securing our future on that. Item two, it's time and place to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing on fiscal year eighteen nineteen budget. Ask the clerk when the notice was published.
March second.
Any written comments for or against?
Yes, sir.
This time I'd ask staff to provide a report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to take this and when I get in trouble, Lindsay will pick up. The, um, budget that's before you has expenditures. Uh, seven million twenty-six thousand. Has revenues, uh, seven million nine seventy-six. When you add transfers of one million thirty-eight, excuse me, one million thirty-nine thousand, it shows a deficit of ninety-one thousand seventy-eight dollars. The budget as published did not take into consideration a negative vote on local option sales tax or to the extent that the vote affected us. What I'm asking council tonight is to not pass the estimated tax levy of ten point nine three, but to pass the tax levy of nine point nine one and some change.
Three seven. Nine point nine one, three seven.
So, I'll just say, um, for the record that, um, a lot of time and effort went into this, uh, discussion. Uh, we started, um, right towards the end of calendar year seventeen and straight into where we are now. Numerous discussions and meetings at finance, we've had a total of four work sessions here as a council, three or four, don't remember. Uh, and a lot of time and effort has gone into this and clearly some of it, we were waiting to see a result and, uh, act accordingly. So, um, I, I again want to go on record to applaud the previous councils and administrations before us, getting Polk City to the point of where we are today, uh, at that low rate that they've been able to maintain for the long time that they were able to maintain it. Um, and see this move tonight as a huge, uh, action moving forward, um, taking into account, uh, the little bit of lost revenue that we will see due to the, uh, vote on Tuesday, uh, but also putting us in a position to move forward, uh, without having to make extreme drastic major cuts. Any other comments? If not, is there anyone here who wishes to be heard for or against proposed budget? Need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
I just, go ahead.
Got a second, but you can go ahead.
I just wanna say that I'm disappointed that, uh, the way this impacts the citizens of Polk City and then nobody's here. For or against? Well, you're a regular.
We only had one at their meeting.
Only had what?
One person at their budget meeting.
Money doesn't mean much to people.
Roll call please.
Vogel?
Yep.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, item B, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-nine, adopting the budget for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. And setting a levy rate at nine ninety-one.
Three seven.
Three seven one. Need motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call please.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yep.
Motion carries. Item three, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-seven, approving an agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the U-Step program for Third Street and Bridge Road Signalization Project. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. Very happy that, um, council is able to act on this agreement. Um, this is an agreement that's on a fifty-five forty-five basis. Maximum amount is two hundred thousand dollars. This coupled with other funding should bring the cost of the signal light third and bridge within grasp of the city. Before you is a resolution that approves the agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation. This is a very good step forward in making the signal a reality.
And to further that, we have a meeting set up in the next week or two with, um, Polk County to look for additional funding, so we're rapidly moving forward with this project. Questions, comments?
Quickly becoming one of the most asked about things from my perspective.
No question about it.
Ever.
That's the question I had, will there, with the engineering, will we get any artist rendering of what it will look like? I have some people to show.
Most likely because we'll have bid and, uh, did document. I don't know if it's gonna be an artist rendering or the engineering document.
Okay. They'll, they'll be done, so we'll see. It'll have to be shown for bidding construction purposes.
And because it's the question that I get asked, what, what timeframe are Polk and here wants?
My timeframe or his timeframe?
I want the real timeframe.
With this agreement, construction can start July one. We're working to have construction start as close to that date as possible. Uh, these are not long construction projects, thirty to forty-five days.
No, Mid-American, excuse me, Mid-American Energy will be involved in this one thing.
There'll have to be electricity there, but I think it's, uh, readily available at this intersection.
Say, do you wanna call them?
No.
Okay.
Just curious.
We're on extension for Wolf Creek.
Take a motion on three, thank you.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty eighteen twenty-seven.
Second.
Roll call please.
Vogel?
Yep.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries, item four, consider motion to receive and file the bids for the bids received for the fire department. Second. Roll call please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yep.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries, item five, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-eight, approving purchase agreement for the K-9 program. You got anything to add to that?
I do, Gary has some too, sorry if I go first, I'll just do real quick. Uh, I won't rehash what we talked about with the K-9 committee members. Basically this purchase agreement, we settled on a vendor, K-9 tactical out of Sheraton, Iowa. I've worked with him previously at Windsor Heights, uh, provided the first and second K-9, current one is our second one. Very reputable, does a great job, retired Navy CEO, trained dogs in the, for special warfare, police work in the military. We did a site visit, uh, Lindsay Williams came with us from the committee, Matt Iker on for the K-9 committee and Alyssa Coonard, the Polk City women's group was on the committee as well, we all went down and visited the facilities in Sheraton, looked at the training grounds, met the dog that we would give with this purchase agreement. Having said all that, this is what I'm most comfortable in forward, to the committee selected to go forward and then the purchase agreement is with that K-9 vendor. The city will agree to purchase the, the dog for fourteen thousand dollars, it's a dog initial training, all the basic equipment, but there's a letter included where the association will fund the buy the dog and then gift it to the city. But the agreement assumes all the ownership and all the responsibilities for the dog. So on a side note, we are at approximately, I haven't added everything up after our fundraising event at Papa's, the initial donation from the, uh, association, we're somewhere between nine and ten thousand dollars already that fourteen thousand raised. I'd like to, I don't know if it's the proper place to say, thank you to Sean Comer. He gave us ten percent of his evening's take when we were over there and then matched it personally, brought a total of a thousand dollars towards that, but, so. Any questions for me?
So, we, we will actually move it, pull the trigger, if you will, on, uh, on this, once, once you've met that fourteen thousand dollars raised or, or.
No, we're pulling the trigger now, we'll sign the agreement tonight, send the deposit of five thousand dollars to association, that's the initial five thousand they put up for it. Then the association, uh, president, Matt Iker, put a letter of intent in the application packet that the association will pay for the whole raise rest of the funds.
Okay, okay, that's, okay.
This isn't any cost to the city for it, it's just, the city's assuming responsibility for that dog, uh, somewhere around August twentieth, with the, the five week training will start with this, like, K-9 handler and dog.
I get that and I appreciate the, the collaborative approach and I know Dave, being on the committee, who isn't here is supportive of everything that was going so good with all that, do you, and I don't wanna rehash everything that we've gone over, what's our annual, uh, ad thereafter for being at the department with the K-9 as opposed to not, do we know that?
It was fifty-four hundred dollars, so we brought forth one through.
Per year, that's an annual?
Yes.
There's nothing that really changed, I mean, it's other than something happened to the dog, right?
Correct, and I, I tried to factor like a ten percent, you know, in there for unforeseen item, actually it's about that four hundred dollars, it came up just under five thousand dollars by estimate. And then we settled on that fifty-four hundred, if it would crack a tooth or something like that, there's some things you can't check for.
How will this increase your budget and care and watching of this animal?
That was the five thousand four hundred I requested on a line item earlier, or in twenty-seventeen.
Yeah, that would pass through.
Yep. Yeah, when we're going overnight, there's no cost to the city with it, it's just the city will accept responsibility and Gary can talk a little more about that and liability for the K-9 once we take delivery of it at the train.
Get that?
Just a real quick add, the agreement has the city assuming liability for the dog. And that liability was taken first through our city attorney and secondly through our insurance, ICAP, who has determined that even with this agreement and the liability transfer, um, they were underwrite the risk. So, the risk part has been somewhat mitigated and put to a third part.
Good with all of it.
Yeah, I mean, we've had discussions on the liability issue, I mean, we, the dog is ours, we're the ones that are using it.
Right.
And the K-9 tactical isn't gonna be responsible for it after they hand it over to us, so, uh, we just need, it is what it is, we needed to know that and be able to insure for it.
Uh, we'll, we'll know in the contract, it's not all just the liability, there's a one-year health guarantee on the dog, anything goes wrong with it, that we don't cause to the animal, the dog will be replaced, and also if the dog doesn't perform to standard. And that initial purchase price includes one eight-hour training session per month for the first year of that, that new handler taking over that dog, which is very beneficial, I think, and really sets the program up for success for the rest of the career of that dog.
Any questions?
I guess I should give Lindsay a chance on front of spot, she went on the site visit if she had anything to add, I didn't mean to.
The only thing that I can add is that this dog is coming from a really good, um, company, this guy has an amazing facility. It's not a small operation by any means, it's very well thought out, it's very professional, he has off-site locations that we also toured, um, and so I was very impressed, I thought it was just gonna be walking into a little dog kennel, so to speak, but no, it wasn't that at all, it was a huge facility with lots of training rooms, lots of other dogs there that are in the middle of training. There was a sheriff there at the time who's just going through his training program, um, so you can tell it's very professional. I think we're, we're getting a dog from a very good trainer.
It is, as I said, he's out in California right now training bomb detection dogs for counties out there funded through the state for counterterrorism. Uh, he flies all over the, the country doing trains, I would, I would say on my, this is my opinion, but I would believe he's probably among the top five K-9 trainers in the United States. We're just lucky enough, he's from Des Moines and, uh, that we have him with his experience and his ability that was in, within driving distance for us.
I know you've told us this before, what breed is the dog?
Belgian Malinois. So it's like a smaller German Shepherd.
Yeah, that's.
I, I trust the guy so much, I adopted one of the dogs that were going to get its brothers. It, it wasn't, uh, quite aggressive enough and he was going to sell it as a home protection dog and it's now living at my, my house, so.
Well, I've had people ask me and I've told, well, I can't remember, it's not a German Shepherd. He didn't wait.
Yeah, have him call me and I'll bring, my daughter named ours, it's a donut. She thought that was a good, a good joke about her dad, so if anybody wants to come eat donut, I'll bring them up to the police department for them.
Name your other dog copy too, otherwise.
No.
All right, take a motion on five.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Motion carries, item six, consider motion to approve second reading of two thousand eighteen two hundred, amending water and sewer rates and connection charges. Take motion. Second. Roll call please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Sarchat? Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, consider motion to approve the second reading of ordinance two thousand eighteen three hundred, amending tree ordinance. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Item eight, consider motion to approve the second reading of ordinance two thousand eighteen four hundred, amending collection of solid waste. Motion.
So since I moved, I missed the first reading, this is upping our requirements.
Yes.
For.
Insurance and fees. Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Motion carries, next item is reports, in particular is mayor, council, city administration, et cetera, et cetera, just a couple of things I have real quick. I do wanna call attention to item eighteen and consent agenda, uh, we are appointing Steve Gergen to the Trails and Gateway Committee. Steve happened to stop me a couple of weeks ago randomly and come and go one morning. And, uh, anyway, we had a great visit, he just wanted to get more involved with Polk City, told me he was a, have a bicyclist and, and all, I had a great visit with him, talked to him again today, um, he's contacted, uh, the Trails and Gateways Committee and so he's gonna be filling the vacancy, uh, that Pete Knapp, uh, when he got out of town. So, um, just a guy looking forward to getting involved and this was a good fit for him and, um, anyway, he, I asked him when, uh, he, he's got a meeting coming in April, I think, and I asked him to come make a presentation part, then he'll probably come make a presentation to council just to keep us up to date on all the fun stuff that are going on, uh, bicycle world. Um, and also just, uh, note thanking the Polk City women, I had the opportunity to go do my annual update with them last Tuesday and always a fun group of women to go top two and see all the fun things going on, uh, with them. That's all I have, anybody else have anything else to add?
I do have one thing.
Yes, please.
So, I had somebody contact me and ask if we've looked at the traffic on West Side and Maple around school let-out time, I know we had done something on, um, or I guess, yeah, West Side Drive, I think, and.
We changed it no point there, so, yep.
Um, but she said she has seen a couple of times where kids just run out between the cars that are there picking up and they're kinda difficult to see, so, um, I don't know. What all went into whatever is the last action we took there or if that's, maybe just to kinda keep an eye on that area and see if there's other things to be.
I've also heard that and I think it's the children who live on Maple trying to cross the road.
I would echo that 'cause I've seen them, I know exactly where they're at.
I know initially when we first were working with the school district and we looked at all the, the rapid flashing high intensity LED crosswalk, uh, lights that we had, uh, spoke with the school about educating the, the kids to go to the, the, up to Parker to cross or, or down to the stop sign and cross. I can say that from the police department, we do school patrol any, uh, every day, if the officer's not on their call, morning and night, we, we go to half hour to it, about fifteen minutes before and, and a half, fifteen minutes after, make sure kids are getting home safe in the crews of neighborhoods and up and down Broadway and, uh.
I would say for the most part though, only because I am one of the parents who happens to pick up on that intersection. That I, and no offense, but I've not seen any law enforcement in the time that I've been up there at West Side Drive and Maple too. So, and I, and I know exactly where you're talking and because the cars are parked along the northern side, 'cause we moved those cars to the northern side and now exactly what you're saying, those kids are darting out between those cars and the cars that are coming, uh, east, I guess at that point, uh, are, yeah, they're, they're slamming down, so, I, and I.
Does the construction change any of that?
Nope.
Nope.
And, and honestly, this isn't making excuses for the police department, there's nothing we can really do unless we would go.
Agreed.
Well, I think it's just, yeah, do we need a, yeah, I.
I mean, I mean, the crazy part about it, right.
High traffic road in many other times, it's not high, um, speed, anything like that, but, you know, like you said.
I would make the argument that I liked it better the way that it was before and that's only from a parent that picks up up in that neighborhood, that I liked it better on the other side of the street 'cause then when the kids did come across, 'cause they're, what they're doing is they're coming out of that park and then they're crossing right there and, and my argument would be is I think that, that, that when it was on the other side of the street, the cars that were coming could see the kids on the sidewalk versus the cars that are picking up there.
Exactly, cars are now blocking the view of the children, I saw it firsthand Friday, Thursday, I saw my son walking.
Yeah, I've seen it. I'm glad somebody said something, 'cause I'm.
I'm open to work with our, we wanna meet on that again and talk about, I'm open to.
Maybe get through this school year and then revisit it again.
Yeah, we just got all the parents.
I know, I know.
Another school year to move them, so.
But it's construction, you know, so.
I know, but.
Every. But, yeah.
It's half, doesn't weigh six together, the kids are running to the cars in front of cars, even if people had a better sightline on them, they're still running out in front of cars, they don't look. They see their mom sitting there at the minivan door open, they sprint across the street to it.
Oh, yeah.
So it's either the kids crossing are gonna be in danger that live there or the kids crossing to the car are gonna be in, in danger, so it's whatever you guys decide that is the best approach for it.
Ron, you had your hand up, you were gonna.
Yeah, while we're on this subject, uh, there now is someone assumes a duty of walking kids across Broadway down at King's Way, they aren't crossing just at Oakwood, whatever that is, Oakwood. There's, I don't know, probably eight kids that cross down there. An adult goes out with them and makes sure they cross 'cause there's no crosswalk there, there's no signage there. I don't know if this is something we need to contact the school about to see if there's something we can do to alleviate that problem.
Is there a sidewalk on the other side if they go across on Oakwood?
So if you crossed it at Oakwood, you couldn't walk a sidewalk down to King's.
Part of the plan, if I may. Please. Is we need a sidewalk, it's always been part of the plan for that, when that, those two lots develop there on King's Place to the west, that a sidewalk would be placed in there so the kids could go up to that crosswalk then and go across.
Uh huh.
That's kind of been the plan, but those lots have not been built on, so the sidewalks are not built on. But that sidewalk could go in to help that situation out.
There's one on the top of it.
One of them is and one of them isn't, right?
Or is it both, are they both all empty?
There's two lots on King's Place.
Yeah.
One that would face Broadway and one that faces, um.
King's Place.
King's Place, thank you.
Right.
Um, that need to be built on before we can have a, um, get a sidewalk through there. When we do that, that's going to alleviate, will that, will that put a sidewalk all the way down Broadway from Wood to King's Way? Or is that just only into King's Way?
It's just gonna get it to King's Place, you still have, still damage going down towards, um, the TCI entrance.
Well, my point being that when those kids, I know the guy real well that went out there and walked him across the street, there were eight kids crossed the King's Way and none that crossed it over to Oakwood where we spent all our money.
I have seen kids crossing it. I have seen kids crossing it, Oakwood, for what it's worth, eh, in the mornings, I have, cuz I, only reason I noticed is cuz I saw the lights.
Yeah, and, and it used to be when, when I still worked up there, the kids from down in there walked over to get on the bus at, at the grade school. And so there probably would be kids crossing there.
Just at a different time.
Four o'clock, when, or whenever that bus from Almond gets there, yeah, you're right.
And Oakwood is a longer street, so it may work out that there happens to be more kids on one versus the other now, but.
Mm-hmm.
The, the decision.
I care about.
Yeah.
So we really don't have, I mean, as far as the sidewalk deal goes, that's until they sell those lots, we're waiting, right, which, that means.
We've had this conversation numerous times, and I even spoke with the owner of those two lots, and he, he said that he would be willing to discuss putting those sidewalks in under the previous conditions that we've had as, you know, the, the city pays a portion and he would pay a portion, he said he would at least entertain it at that point in time. So there is a, I mean, we could talk to him and see if that's a possibility, but.
Just talk to him and at least see, I mean, I, it doesn't hurt to talk to somebody, we're not spending any money to do that.
Well, them and whatever other impact of the, you know, getting at the entire stretch, if we're, I don't know how close we are. One, there's a economy of scale, we could do more at once, and two, it would, it's not this problem, but allow for something to go the, the length of the property, I don't know what that means. It does, I think you're gonna, I think you're gonna find some properties down the way that might be a little harder to work with, rather than the owner of the two lots, because he's pretty vested in Polk City, he cares. I'm not saying the others don't, I'm just saying that he's very vested. So do we, and I'm not saying to do this, but is it back to the kind of the, we, we could assess this, right? We could do it and assess it to each one of those properties that don't have. That's, I mean.
You could only get twenty-five percent of the value of the lot, I don't know if that's enough to cover.
I'm not, but thank. Suggesting that we do that.
Well, where I think there might be a little bit of, of miscommunication here is that when we set up that crosswalk at the school, the school was involved, and they wanted that crosswalk, and only one crosswalk at the location that it's at. So, if there's other crosswalks that are being used, it's not what the school endorsed.
Right, but, but we don't have a vehicle, we don't have a method to get the kids from King's Place to the crosswalk, cuz there's no sidewalk.
Correct, yeah, they'd have to walk in the grass, exactly.
And how long ago was that agreement made when that study was done?
Last year.
That was last year.
Last year.
Last year, well, I don't, I don't know why things have changed, I just know they sent somebody out there and they don't even give him an orange vest. That's neither here nor there, I just, I think the way we should go is we should talk to the owner and, and should open things up to school again. And tell them that, you know, the kids are crossing down there and we feel it's unsafe.
Especially if we can get a sidewalk put in, I mean, if we get a sidewalk put in, it makes a whole lot more sense, right now, it's kinda challenging when they don't have a way to get down their crosswalk.
Right, yeah.
And the other thing is, I, I believe, I haven't looked lately, but it used to be that when, when you're at that intersection that's got the marked crossing now.
Yeah.
That there is a path to the front door also, where down on King's Place.
Right.
You'd have to walk up the sidewalk to get up there or traverse through the parking lot, so.
Except, except there is, there is a parking lot, there is a sidewalk on the east side of the parking lot, they can come right across King's Way and walk that sidewalk down and then cross, cross where the bus thing is.
Is it a marked one, is that what? No. Okay, got it.
No, it's, uh, no, it's not.
Okay. And that's.
But the majority of it, they're walking on a sidewalk.
Right.
I think, yeah, the school's concerned though, they wanted the one that we lit up, and only that one, cuz they didn't want kids walking across the parking lot of King's Place either, cuz when they, when they come across to Oakwood, they can come right on the sidewalk around, and I'm, that's just, I'm just relaying what the school.
Well, I, I'm not doubting anybody, but less, rather than school this, school that, let's, let's look at a way to keep these kids safe. Let's, let's, I think sitting down and talking to them doesn't hurt a thing, maybe they can do something to change it. I don't know.
Call. Anything else?
No.
No? Anything yet? Good house fire?
Yeah, there's one left out.
Good job.
Separate chimney, there's still a chimney. Which I don't know, on that note, it's not the safest, uh, with that chimney still up, so we, we taped it off, that chimney is built very well. So I don't know what ability we have with the developer there. I would say if we can push them at all to be in there and at least cleaning that up as quick as they can, then. Probably.
Has, what communication has the fire department had, as most of the communication on this burn, I was only C.C., so I don't know.
I mean, nothing more other than they asked us to do it, we.
Shoot, can you shoot Kimberly email and just ask them to? Yeah. Anything else? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I just wanna.
Yes, please.
Do you?
Oh.
Thank you.
Or the, go ahead.
You sure? I was gonna thank you and the fire department for Saturday's efforts. You did a good job. Uh, also, you guys must be teaching my kids in school better than I can teach them at home, because all day Saturday and all day Sunday, I learned about fire safety, police safety, preparedness, and we're solid at our house now. Beyond, beyond what you guys did Saturday, you guys are doing something good.
You got your escape routes marked.
We, we know to go across street to the mailbox in case there are fire, we know how to call nine-one-one on a cell phone.
Did you change your batteries on Sunday?
We, uh, we've talked about changing batteries.
Talking about changing batteries, but didn't.
We didn't have any, but. So.
Yeah.
Thank you, fire department, police department.
Did you guys have much problems up there at all as far as traffic goes and all?
No, I had chief came out on Saturday and kinda hung out there, I think the only problems I noticed, it'd be surprising, many people actually video as they're driving by. Saw a lot of them.
But we didn't, we didn't have.
They're posting on Facebook.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we didn't have any.
From a booming vehicle?
Yeah, yeah.
It's all a couple rubber neckers, but lots of spectators.
It already looks better coming into town, I'll tell you. Anything, I saw it for a while. Take a motion, please.
So moved.
All in favor?
All right.